Yes, he backed it back.
I'm gonna call this meeting the order six o'clock. Thank you all for leaving us today.
Father God, thank you for our today. Father, thank how your blessed time do with you, Father, best is kind. I should come into this meeting, gather us, make sure that our decision to write one, please, may my prayer be amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which the saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna hold our posters up and I've got some elementary school students that are gonna help me tonight. They're actually gonna do the presentation. The first one's not here, so I'm going to just kick in and do her part and the other ones will, um, they'll follow along. At our school, we teach the seven mindsets. And the seven mindsets, the seven mindsets are all about, um, thinking positively. And we have Henry Richardson and we have Nancy Garcia and we have Levi Ward that's gonna help tonight. And so they didn't let them, we're gonna be on tour this year because we've already been to and through other places thinking, so we can be easy. But, um, our school teaches the seven mindsets and there's seven different mindsets. And each month we take a mindset, the teachers teach it and we have little projects associated with the mindsets. And so whenever, um, whenever we go through and we learn about it, it's just things that we have been taught as children, all of us at home. And a lot of times now our children do not get that sometimes from home. So it makes happy and successful people. So, um, they've actually done research on this and there's seven things that they do have in common. So let me, let me go ahead, we'll start with the presentation. And we usually do a PowerPoint and we'll, I'll let the children hold it. This is, this is our project that's associated with the seven mindsets. And if you wanna turn it around so that everybody else can see it too, that we call it Be the Light. And you'll see why in just a minute that we, we're calling it Be the Light. Okay, here are the seven mindsets that we were talking about. And the first mindset is thinking that everything is possible. And we teach children, you know, to believe in yourself and you believe whatever you set out to do, you know, that you can do it. And so, um, everything is possible. Also, we're all connected. There's things that we all share and, you know, we all are part of, um, just like our town, our community. And it all has to, we all have to work together in order, you know, to make it go. Um, attitude of gratitude, you know, we have to be so thankful for what we have. And then here's my visitor, Ms. Carmen Coleman, and I'm gonna let her take over. Ms. Coleman, I'm on attitude of gratitude right here. Do you want to continue and read that for us?
All right. Our school teaches the seven mindsets throughout the year. These mindsets make us happy and successful people. Here are the seven mindsets, everything is possible, work, connected, attitude of gratitude, love to give, high percentage accountable to toughs down in patchy verse. Here's Henry to tell you about how to change your mindset.
Thank you very much. This project takes two extra time and I've changed thinking. Together we can move mountains. I'm gonna get some of the ideas from her. First mindset is negative, the second mindset is positive. I can't make this any better. I can always improve, I'll keep trying. I made a mistake, just fix up my problem. I can't read, I don't wanna train for my language. Your mindset is all about...
Notice the light, our gorgeous light have made street with lamps and Christmas lights. Now, Vana Light bracelets, Santa's got dollar hearts given for our new industry. Reeling under the stars, it will be five, it will be worth the fortune. Five one two eight, with slides and then we will be hunkled in camera room for snowball now on current iron. Bring your Vana books and flashlights, lighters and chairs. We can hear that we tend to act, we become donations and... This is our board. This is our Christmas committee, we're gonna have a party in the afternoon.
Hi, my name is Zena, I would show you the past reservation. At the top we have the old hospital, we have the bucket flashlights and then we have the old pressure. And at the bottom we have the, a bit of the old recovery. Please have a good day. So that features the George generation to be drawn. That is our box.
Together we can do it, we all, we can take this.
And so I've got to tell you that we've only started this project at the end of the year. It covers all of these mindsets because we work together and everything we've done, our whole message to the kids is that if we all do our part, then we can accomplish our goal. And so just by selling, we've sold like dollar bracelets, you've probably seen some of those up and down, you know, on Main Street stores. And then we have our reading, oh, the store's not coming in Thursday. And so if you're interested, we've got, um, everything's a dollar, our concession stand, dollars anywhere, a dollar hot dogs. So Jordan's gonna have cat and hat slides, you know, if you got two of them, bring two of them, bring them home. And so then we're gonna read for a lot of last, you know, twenty or thirty minutes. So, um, but it, that should be a fun night for us. But, uh, we've got the first lamp post, we've already got that. And then we've got some kind of set, set aside, depending on how much we give, we'll vote on our Christmas declaration about what we want to do for, you know, somewhere around Main Street. But from what I understand, this Rory, she has done just an absolute fantastic job with, you know, phasing in, she wants to phase in things. But I think if everybody does their part, we can make our town just look awesome. So, and I think our kids, they have, um, we've changed our whole mindset from negative to positive thinking and just, you know, being able to think we can, you know, achieve our goals. And Nancy is.
You supposed to comment?
Yes, sir.
Greetings. I have several things to say tonight. Timbered ornaments, didn't know we had one, I'm gonna send over copies of it and I would encourage you to start enforcing it. There's no cost involved to the people doing the timbering, it's more of a tracking device. Second one, the minutes of our joint meeting, or should I say your minutes of our joint meeting, have many, many, many errors in it. And I would request that you have them corrected. First of all, G-Mass does not build the parcels. Parcels are built over there. They check them every three years. Pictures are taken every year of the third that they arrive, not the first and the second year. Commissioner Cruz, you mentioned during the meeting that the commission had decided that no raises were being given in the courthouse, just to the road department. Any chance of getting a copy of those minutes where that was decided? Secondly, Mr. Benjamin's motion, it says, was not seconded, therefore it died due to lack of a second. It's not true. Mr. Commissioner Wu who seconded it, after the discussion, he withdrew his second. And then Commissioner Wu and Commissioner Cruz offered an additional motion, which was passed. The motion that they offered said that the amended motion requested by the Board of Assessors should be adopted, leaving out line one, which included salaries to staff. And that would be discussed at the February meeting. Uh, what, what your motion says here is to pay the bills for two new board members, including the trading and G-Mass tech revaluation. And the commissioner will discuss raises at the next meeting. It was to amend the budget and I would ask that the budget be amended. It did carry four to one with Commissioner Benjamin opposing it. Other item is something that you'll be voting on later on tonight about public signing shoes. Sorry, guys, I look at this as nothing more than a bad way to try and intimidate the public from speaking. It's not like these meetings go on for hours and hours. Last month it lasted just about fifteen minutes. Usually there's one or two people that address you. Don't really see the need for it other than intimidating some people that may not have the tolerance to just stand up and say what they believe. I would ask, at least for you, to vote to deny that process. We have so many ordinances that we do nothing about enforcing. Why create more paperwork? Simply to make the short time that we spend in here easier more aggravating for the citizen. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Any more public comments? Approved minutes for February the twelfth and March the first meeting. Any discussion? All vote? Approved to pay monthly bills?
I'm gonna watch you pay monthly bills.
I'll say. Any discussions? All vote? Mr. Ron Nelson, DOT, put in on state, one hundred, state law, one hundred and five.
Yes, sir. Uh, first of all, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I think I spoke with Mr. Carter a few times, uh, regarding the bridge that we're trying to get, uh, basically replaced through a design bill process. Let me back up and introduce myself carefully, uh, by drawing Nelson on behalf of G-DOT, our commissioner, Mr. Wilson Murray, our chairwoman, Miss Anne Russell. Thank you for having me. Black, try to get an idea from the board as far as the minimum profile, the elevation of the finished bridge that will be done through a design bill contract. Right now what we have is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has established the minimum elevation over the mean water elevation, ten feet. That's what, that's what we're gonna have. Right now it's somewhere around twenty-four, a little over twenty-four feet is the separation right now. So there'll be a reduction of about fourteen feet and nine inches, which is fairly drastic, you know, it's still be observed. And what I'm saying just in plain terms, when somebody rides down the existing bridge or new bridge is being built, they're gonna have to look down at the surface of the future bridge. So without having any objections from anyone in Jeff Davis County House, I ask if the county administrator might be able to provide us with a letter of no objection unless there are any objections.
Where'd y'all determine the mean water level from?
U.S. Coast Guard does a study. And they, they determine what that elevation is for the water. And they also give us a separation for what that elevation of water to the proposed bridge. And then, of course, the final bridge is a design bill process, so we don't know what the final will be, we just know there'll be a minimum ten feet.
I just wonder where that level corresponds to, uh...
Within the banks and what the water is.
No, not to existing bridges like the bridge on Lumber City and the bridge on one forty-four because I've seen them being danger of being closed because of water. So I guess...
They're maybe too high. In this case, we're, it'll approach the bottom of the canyon.
Right.
And the design...
I would want this one to be in that, the situation, that depends what I'm relating, so I don't, I just...
From a, and from an engineering perspective, it'll be engineered hydro, and hydrology will be taken into consideration. But that, that's what we're asking right now is to not overspend the budget. There's no reason to spend more for what the current profile is. It's, um, for lack of a better way to put it, it's not an exaggerated matter.
Correct. I mean, long time ago, it was, it was a perfect thing, because that was boats that had to go under. When they, when they killed the raids for riverways, they don't do anymore.
Correct. And, and from a historical perspective, that's what's been seen, um, so we, we understand that from the past. But at this point in time moving forward, there's not gonna be, it's not a weird place to set an elevation.
Long as, long as it ain't gonna be in danger of being closed like the Lumber City and one forty-four, if I'm good with it.
And I guess that's my question, is that the same period that went into the design, because I mean, we just, we built Lumber City Bridge and... Right. And, and there again, the design has not been completed. We're, we're doing a design build, so basically we're gonna put it to a design build team. Uh, we've got four qualified proposers, it's in procurement right now, the lady will be, uh, maybe eleven. So those, those individuals, the team that is actually a successful proposal, will, will go through the design process and provide us at, at a minimum ten feet clearance. Where we could possibly be more than that, we're gonna, we're gonna set the minimum at ten feet based upon the information we have. During pre-lead activities, that's the best information we've got.
Based on what you're saying, it's gonna be ten feet of clearance based on the past high water mark?
The mean water.
The average.
And, and that's engineering practice when it comes to trying to determine, because there'll, there'll be a plus-two factor put into it. So like you were describing, water from an elevation standpoint, going as far as being conveyed down the river, whatever that aim is, our requirements are plus-two. But I, I do believe that the, the ten feet is gonna be in excess of the plus-two mark as well. Does that answer your question? Is that what I'm saying?
Well, right.
It ain't gonna be the, I'm thinking about that year it flooded.
That, that's, that's where I'm getting that.
On the, on the hall of a bridge, there was lots of, lots of water, fully to see, and I know Lumber City Bridge was like, well, it was a little bit of a bottom.
That's what I'm asking, is it gonna be, is it gonna be higher than Lumber City and one forty-four? Because I'm pretty sure it did flood one forty-four, didn't it? I'm pretty sure. I mean, I just, I just asking, I mean, I, you know, you've given us a, against the, for the mean water, but does that mean it's gonna be a foot lower than Lumber City or a foot higher? Or, I mean, I'm guessing that's the way...
In your perspective on those, those two bridges, um, but the hydrology of that particular study for that will show what the impact has to be. And we'll be on a plus-two scale above that.
I gotta voice that, how much of it's gonna be bridge on the new, you building? Are you going to...
Two thousand, six hundred and forty-five.
Are you gonna shorten up the bridge from what we got now as far as length? Because that's what's gonna spike your water, is the dirt on each side.
It's gonna be the same length, they say, and they basically, they just gonna take that, but if you took that hump out, you'd take the whole people for that.
And that's the phrase all the time, is the, you know, removal of the hump. And the best, the best...
I think you make a safer bridge with a hump out of it.
But the history, I mean, it's such, like you were saying, boat traffic necessitated that kind of clearance.
Right.
That that is the longer case size point. Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys.
For the update. Andre Taylor, joint development authority.
Thank you very much. Andre Taylor, joint development authority. Um, I gave you a, uh, report that just had updates on different, um, projects. We still have a lot of interest with a couple of restaurant franchises, um, a couple of existing industries interested in expansions. Um, one of the things that is new, I believe, is a hotel. We have a, a prospect interested in, in building a hotel, um, so we're working on that with Georgia EMC. We've been trying to get a, information on feasibility for that. Uh, manufacturing appreciation week is coming up next month. We did nominate Beasley Forest Products for the sale award of manufacturer of the year. I guess we'll know from that, uh, pretty soon.
Small, small, large, what, what are they?
I'm not sure, I can't remember what's showing whether it considers, I think it's large. Um, you know, one of the things, basically the development authority doesn't have a lot of land, a lot of product to, to market. And we do have some land on the Douglas Highway, um, and we have a ton of local industry interested in that. But anyway, we hope to, you know, as our squash funds build up, hope to use some of that, leverage it to get some, some one Georgia grant funds to, uh, hopefully buy some land and develop some more industrial product for the county to create more jobs. Um, I know y'all probably heard from the census twenty twenty folks, that's very important that we, um, it's gonna be starting up soon, they're, they're hiring people now. Um, very important that we get everybody in the community, as many people as possible, hammered because that depends on our redistricting and everything, you know, for our state, federal funds. Um, so it's gonna be very important for us and, you know, Chamber Development Authority is willing to, to lead the charge on that. Uh, tomorrow, you know, we, we've tried to do some programs, I have it workforce development and what Roxy was just doing here kinda goes along perfectly with that. Tomorrow we have a lunch with leaders at the high school and we're gonna be doing some kind of networking with, uh, with our, our leaders. And I'll send you out an email, if you can come to that, that would be great. Uh, March twenty-sixth, we're gonna be partnering with Job Training Unlimited to host, um, industry and technical college tours for our school system counselors and administration to get them to know more about the kinds of jobs that are here locally to, uh, so that they can, uh, you know, better help prepare our students for those jobs locally. Um, and then there's also some chamber updates, you know, one of the things people don't really, the, the development authority sometimes works behind the scenes and people, people know the chamber because it's out there, it's more public. And, uh, so I think it's important that Sonya and I work together very well. Um, the chamber's doing very well, we're almost at two hundred members. We wanna thank y'all for your support coming to our event last week and, um, and, uh, advertising on the map, we're doing a map. We're out of maps and we have a lot of people come in for, for maps still. Uh, so we're gonna have a beautiful, high-quality map featuring the community, um, that, uh, that we'll be able to give out. We also created a small business alliance, you know, we feel that it's very important to not just support our industries, but to support our small businesses as well. So we created a small business alliance, we're hosting a digital marketing class next week for them. Um, and of course, thank you for your support of our J.D. Ford Leadership Academy. We, uh, went to Atlanta, we have, um, kicked that off and I believe that the participants are, are really enjoying it and learning a lot. Today I met with a, a business prospect, you know, who came to the chamber and he was interested, he's interested in doing an athletic complex here, he wants to do body pages and things like that. Um, you know, so, so many people think of the chamber before they think of the development authority. So it's, it's, it's great that we work well together, you know, people see us as, as supporting both. And Sonya fills in where I can and I fill in where she can, so, um, y'all have any questions on it?
I think y'all did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Thank y'all very much for your support.
John Walker, my father. And I knew you, thanks, I'll talk back for you.
Glad to, sir. Wanted to kinda give y'all an update on, on, for what we're standing on, our fire, our additional fire stations and talk to you about ISO. Uh, I did, I met with the C last month and talked to them about ISO. I'll comment a little bit about the county's, uh, possible projections for ISO program that we have this year. First of all, our, our new fire stations, we got three stations, they're complete, we have equipment in them, we have trucks in them. There was some concern about some equipment for those, we had to come back and buy some more equipment on this farm block. We had, uh, back in two thousand thirteen, ISO has a five-ten, five-twelve, eight-five, four-five sales, which has to do with, uh, with equipment that goes on with one of these fire trucks. ISO took some of the required equipment they wanted on their off. Well, state of Georgia did not do that. So we had to go back and buy some additional equipment for these trucks before the state would sign off on them. Fortunately, we have a person that lives in our campus, works for standards of training, and the day that we were putting the equipment on the trucks, he was there, so he signed off on the trucks. The station was supposed to be signed off on this past Monday, he was unable to, he's gonna be next Monday, but it didn't really matter because I already have his certificates of compliance in my hand. So those stations are operational. One station, the Ottoman Hall Station out there, half left is already responded on structural plan. So they, they're already moving. Now, with that being said, uh, we still don't have all the people in place. We have got seven people that's going to test out next month. We met with nine people last night in orientation. So we're starting to move some people into these positions. But we're not there yet. But the stations are functional, they're operational, we're going to start using them now. It does not, ISO has to have, years ago, ISO would come in automatically. And they would grade their station. Now, you have to run about six months worth of calls out of the station before they come in. Because they've got to show where that station's responded, your person ever responded. So right now, that pretty much lines up where ISO was coming in anyway. We're going to probably get graded somewhere in the fall of this year. Because it's in a five-year cycle. ISO is now finishing up with departments in the state that have not been graded under the two thousand and fourteen grade. They had not changed their grade cycle since the eighties. So when they changed in two thousand and thirteen, it was a major blow. A lot of change, a lot of things we have to do. You know, we had a piece in the paper a couple weeks ago, Tommy done a good job on. And he and I met, he actually put it in the paper about the situation we have with volunteers. And that has netted us some volunteers. We're still not where we need to be in your district out there, so we're getting closer. The rest of the districts, we still, I still need some more people out there at the Bridgeport area, at Blackmore Station. I don't even have a chief out there, I don't have a station chief. So we're still working on that. Everybody I have for that area is real green. So you just really can't take the green person and make them a chief. That's not really a smart thing to do. So we're working on that, I hope to have someone in that position for long. Talk to you, Mr. My ISO. An overview of what we've done over the last several years. When we started with the county fire department about years ago, all we had was what we call fire knockers, two hundred fifty gallon per minute pumps, nine hundred gallon tanks. They were in all five of the county stations. So we had to transition from that, from fire knockers to engines. Engines being that they have at least a seven hundred fifty gallon per minute pump with more water on them. So over the last several years, we've done that. One of my good friends in, over in Tappah County, he was blessed to get three and a half million dollars at one time in his floss. Over the last four flosses, I've got about one point six. So it's took time, and it's taken time to make this happen. The only way to make it happy in the factory is throw money at it. And you know, that's a bad only government, throw money at it. Basically, if you're going to do, if you're going to make headway with ISO ratings, you got to spend money at it. So, we're building these stations, and we got the map out here. This is a five mile map. This is a five mile road map. Back in the early eighties, by, I think probably eighty-three, there was a study done in Jeff Davis County that was called the Master Plan. Master Plan said we need five county stations. Those stations were built. That plan was outdated, basically right after it was wrote. Because everything is done by, not a circle, it's done by road lines. So where you see this area here, this is the new station now, it's not built. This all used to be no coverage, class ten, highest insurance rate there is in the county. Come over here to the Blackmore Station, same area over here, this is covered. Used to be, or is, it still is a class ten. It's going to be probably a year before people start showing relief from these areas from this, because it takes time. It has to be six months, we have to be graded. It has to go into the cycle, which sometimes takes about forty-five to sixty days. And if your insurance rate, you just have to get your new insurance rate right before it goes in. Guess what? You've got to go a whole year of higher premiums before you come back. Or you need to get that over. But it takes time. But with this map, we pretty much have got everything covered. So this area down here, which is probably about, one trailer down here off Close Road, this area right down here. And then the area around Elizabeth Church Road, the church, and probably, I think, twenty-four houses, twenty-four, twenty-five houses in that area are still going to be a class ten. So we're going to have two smaller areas that are still going to be a class ten. And the only way to get rid of that is build two more stations. And it's not practical to build a station for one house or two houses. It may be practical down the road to build a station up here and cover Elizabeth Church and those areas right there. Doesn't, I would hope that the county down the road will plan to do that. So that's the map, and that's the covered area for the map. The only thing that, what we're trying to do, and what we're trying to do is get to the point where, A, we can keep our class, what used to be nine, which is now a four X. The engines took care of that. These three stations are trying to get rid of most of the class ten area in the county. People are paying a high rate. When it comes down, when the station's going to fail, ISO starts identifying that, people's going to automatically get a forty-five, rather than forty-five percent cut in their insurance. That often happens. So that's going to help. Now, to do anything better with the county as a whole, because we do grade, we're graded as a unified department, city county department. So some of the stuff the city does helps the county when it comes to grading. But the only way to get a better classification in this county is what we call water shovel. Because ISO comes in, they grade, they grade, and I won't center them. They grade the fire department, and they grade water shovel or water department. And the city would be the water department, or the city dent is the water department. But those two, the fire department and the water, which is the water department or water shovel for a county, when they grade those, if there's a big difference in them, and the fire department grades way up here, and the water department grades here, they deduct points from your total ISO grading to level off. It's called a diversion. So they take points away from you. If these two grade good, you actually get points. There's a possibility of a hundred and five points that you can get. ISO changed that in two thousand and thirteen. It was a hundred, that's a hundred and five. Most of the five additional points basically come from prevention and from inspections. That's what it comes from. Those programs, we have, those programs are placed. So we've got a good bid, those five additional points in the new system, when we got those. But overall, we're a four X, counted by a four X. What that means is, some companies do give a better rate for a four X than a nine. Some insurance companies still identify that four X as a nine. Because it's basically, it's basically the same thing. The four X means that the department, the city department or the full-time department is managing the volunteer department. So that's how the four X comes in. But the X means no water. So what we have to do is do tankers. And we've started doing that. We've got, and I've got, if you look at your paperwork, I laid it on, laid it up here for you. I mean, I broke it down according to station draft. Basically, each station, what's in that station. If you look right there, it's county fire department placement. That's what's in each one of the stations. Now, there's one tanker we've got up here, it's a two hundred fifty gallon per minute pump with a five thousand gallon tank. You write about our headquarters, it's a truck and truck, you see it. In the real world, that's a wonderful blessing to us. We utilize that, and it's good to have water. But ISO gives us no credit for it. And the reason why is because that truck is not in a building with a heater in it. It's out in the weather. So they give you no credit. Also, in the grade cycle, they only allow that truck to drive, they give you driving distance at thirty-five miles per hour. So if your water source is here and your fire's up here, you only get thirty-five miles per hour in the grade. So that truck, their grade isn't driving thirty-five miles an hour from the water source to the fire. So, and that's just on the truck, she's a lot tankers, too. But we have, we've started, we've got three, basically three larger tankers in the county and then the big tanker. Like I said, we get no credit from ISO for the five thousand. It's just there for the real world situation. When we need water, it's there. So in the future, if we're going to try to, you know, do anything better in the county than what we are, we're going to have five tankers. We're going to have to put them in there. Because when ISO comes in, what they grade us on, we're going to have to go to three districts, three different parts of the county. We have to provide two hundred fifty gallons per minute water uninterrupted for two hours. If you lose prime for ten seconds, it's a no go, you lost it. So you've got to provide that water for that period of time at that rate uninterrupted. So that means your tankers have got to keep shuttling water to you. You've got to tend to have that water. So the only way to do that is for tankers. So we've got the engines in place, we've got the stations in place, we've got something to tank for, we're going to need more. So that's something that we're going to have to work on. And hopefully, that's going to floss. But it's like I told you earlier, Tappah County has been able to make some moves in their county. But they give them the first floss, the floss before this one, three point five million dollars went to the fire department. And they give them a nice sized amount in this floss to buy tankers, or buying tankers that come out over there trying to get so they're... And they probably will get their whole county to probably a three, somewhere around a three. So that would drop the county. Most county residents would probably see a thirty-five, forty percent, forty percent drop in their insurance from that, what is a four X on a nine, down to like a three for their county. So it is attainable, but it's something we're going to have to work at. Any questions?
I've got one.
Yes.
That what Tommy put in the paper. He said, he said like that, we had a fire station, but we had no help, no volunteer?
Yes, volunteers is a problem.
Do you have a time that...
We've advertised it, we Facebooked it on the E M A Facebook, the Fire Department Facebook. We put it in, we put a thing in the paper, I helped wanted to add it to the paper a couple of times. We've done everything. This article, again, I sat down and talked about, he wrote, it's probably brought more to us than we've had in the past. But we're starting to seek some help with some people. But volunteerism, I'm telling you, is getting across the nation. Every fire chief is dealing with that. All around us are dealing with it. Trying to have volunteers to, because these stations are not going to operate without volunteers unless we go to town a bunch of full-time. And if we do that, we're talking about millions of dollars just to manage these stations. And we just can't afford that. So we've got to figure out what to do about volunteers. So I've had some people ask me, tell my volunteers, and some of them have said they'd like to participate, but they don't want to get all that school. No choice. State requires, they take the basic class, and they take twenty-four hours of training per year. They have no choice, we have no choice in the matter to do it. We had to cut, last year, I dropped forty-one people off our roster. Now, a lot of them were older people that've been around for a long time. We just kept them on the roster because they've been there for a long time. They might have turned their call off a year long, but we kept them there. But we were forced to do that now. The state has had this, this has been a law with the state since, that law's been in place for almost twenty years. But the state has not enforced it, and the reason they haven't enforced it is because now we have policy, council policy, that we have to pay our volunteers. And the indemnity, also the indemnity, if they get killed in line, in the line of duty, there's a big amount of money that the family gets. But all this has got to be in place for them to get that. So the state is now being pushed by the federal government to make sure that we bring, that we enforce our laws, basically. And that's what's going on with the state. But we work with them. We have multi-county drills, we do everything we can to work around people's schedule to help them obtain that so they can have... Anything else? Thank you, Jay. If y'all excuse me, I have another thing to get to. Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Bruce Young, great call. Good evening, guys. How you doing? Just want to give a little bit on fall sports first. I mean, fall and winter sports, we talked about the, you know, the A U, state football championship, we had A U, Georgia A U. They come in, y'all, you talk to them and recognize them, that was a good deal. One out of three teams in state in football, that's pretty good for our community. Basketball stars, first time in the history of basketball, it's our third year in the program. We got, we had two in semifinals in the, just the playoffs. That was a good deal, out of five teams, that was pretty good. Three forty-one project guy, I think, they got rope iron, they stop in out there, look at the goalposts and, you can take them down and hang them and do all that. We've got the guards around them, cushions and stuff, I protect everybody, the safety of it, they there. Other than they have baseball, there's something around the corner. I encourage you guys to come out the twenty-third, not this Saturday, Saturday week. Come out, and I always see a smile on Makita's face, see these grandparents, these parents' smile on their face. So they all, that's their names. And that's what we got to have, and come out and support them, and just watch them and have some recreation and leisure fun. Our upcoming sports is a swim team, we got swim practice, pool, tennis, golf, swim lessons. You see anybody in the community and all, if you hear drownings and stuff in our community and stuff. It's frequent, we used to, I mean, just sit them out and look at them, just give them Mr. Swim lessons and all that, forty dollars for a two-week session, a swim lesson, you know. And the real world, talk about the real world? Okay, ladies, okay. That's all, that's all I got, some other things, I haven't talked about the world. Any questions?
Ron, drop it. You on here? I've got, put together some numbers from what we ran last year and the amount of non-call that we've run this year. Remember, these numbers reflect, we just, we run in one truck per year. And that was, we're being run with five trucks. Last year, a non-call that we run was twenty-two hundred and forty-nine, now it's one call. And this does not reflect the calls we were cancer on or any lift to see us. That was just, once we made patient contact and we do some type of treatment. If we just go to them and pick them up off the floor, assist them, back in a chair, in the bed, that does not reflect these non-call, the volume of numbers. So that's twenty-two hundred and forty-nine last year. This year, we've run four hundred and forty-nine as of yesterday. And I started the month, I started in March, keeping up with how many multiple calls that EMS has to where we, we're on a call, nine-on-one pages, I don't know, and we have to send rescue or first responders to respond to that call until we can get there, until we get clear that it get there. And just already, in eleven days, we've had seven multiple calls to where we were not able to respond within fifteen minutes of delay in response that nine-on-one calls having to wait to actually receive ALS ambulance. That's all I have.
That is called with one ambulance, is that what you...
Yeah, sure. That's, we're at, as of today, we have one ambulance working twenty-four hours a day.
But when they check in, put the number back on.
That's true.
Put the number here.
That's true.
It would help the multiple call situation to where patients are having to wait. As of right now, they're having to wait as quick as fifteen minutes, thirty to forty minutes to delay in response time on getting a nine-on-one ambulance to them.
It also helps during the night, when we go, you know, to respond to more calls at the hospital from hours ten to...
Ten to five.
Ten to five. We'll respond to it, or we try to respond to a call unless it's absolutely necessary from ten to five, because that person's been on ship for eighteen hours and then they have to drive parents a batter or whatever. So a day truck would help to limit that, they would be able to manage the calls different and be more responsible to the people when they need it.
We had that one time, we did.
Yes, we did.
Also, Ronnie, with that, if you had a day truck, could you also use it to do other transports? More local access or at home, different things that we want to do now? Also, Ronnie, with that, if you had a day truck, could you also use it to do other transports, more local access, or at home, different things that we want to do now?
We could broaden our, our eyes a good bit on, on how we use that truck, uh, was just, I mean, I've looked at it, it cost around a hundred and six thousand dollars to put what, what we call a day truck back on. Uh, that's higher than two full-time medics, we already got the ambulance and, and the equipment, that's just personnel. And, uh, we could do some extra calls besides what we do here in, in the county on a day-to-day basis to, to, uh, bring in some extra revenue to, to cover that cost.
I was talking with folks a couple of weeks ago, and they're cross-training, you know, several counties, they're cross-training, and you talk about it, the fires and EMS. And they're working together, and they can use those hours differently, like you're talking about. And, and it's helped them tremendously in saving money, and it's also helped promote firefighters on this volunteers, but they got full time, and it ain't, it ain't, it ain't losing money, I mean, it's, but they're just cross-training. And, and I thought that was great, and, and a guy in Columbia County is the one who was talking that, and he talked, talked to M S C, what he's talking about. He's pretty sharp, they run a, a real tight ship over there, so we, we might do look into that and talk about these fires, you know, everything we need to get out of there. You right, y'all right, volunteers, that ain't happening no more, I thought about it.
Right, I mean, it's just, the, uh, the volunteer service, they've got, everybody has jobs. They can't leave their full-time job to respond to, to the fire at a volunteer rate of pay, which is twelve dollars per call. You know, they just can't afford to kill themselves.
That cross, we need to look in that, see what, what there is to that.
Any, any more questions? Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate the opportunity to come and give you an update on the hospital. Just as a precursor, I wanted to remind you basically of, of what the, you know, the hospital authority acting as Jeff Davis Hospital is. It is a twenty-five-bed critical access hospital. It's a safety net community hospital with its mission that basically serves all those who enter the doors. Um, as a result, we ended up seeing seven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven patients in our emergency room over the past year. Eleven thousand nine hundred and twelve outpatient visits, four thousand three hundred and seventeen clinic visits, one thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine inpatient days. Uh, and we provided three million five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars worth of uncompensated care. Obviously, as well, we're very appreciative of the splash dollars that the county has, uh, provided in our way for capital improvements. Uh, the handout that I provided you is an update from our last fiscal audit, and just wanted to highlight a couple of items with that. Needless to say, on the financial side, we had a very good year. Uh, the first page basically shows the net income, showing the trend, being, uh, very positive with, uh, some fairly significant losses in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And then those, uh, uh, margins changing drastically to the positive side back in sixteen, uh, actually being enhanced further in seventeen, and, uh, and then again in eighteen, so.
Majority of that, we attribute that to just census, or are we getting more efficient at what we're doing, or have we?
Yeah, and that's majority of that, I would deem to be efficiencies. It was a truly a revamp of our, uh, cost management processes, eliminating redundancy, uh, addressing contracts and those types of things to assure that we were, uh, basically being more efficient, productive in our processes.
Is the census up?
The census is up. We have seen some increase in volume, obviously, with those numbers that I just read off. They are, uh, some fairly large numbers. And then we have some new programs that, that we're putting in place that address some of that as well.
That's what I was hoping we were seeing some of that. Probably aren't seeing it at full provision right now, but.
We're, we're definitely not at full occupancy, but, uh, it's definitely as well an improvement in prior years. Uh, on the operating margin, uh, on the next page, you'll, again, see that same trend with a, uh, two thousand and eighteen margin of five point nine percent. You'll also see the comparatives that are on there with the green line being the national critical access average, and then the gray line being all hospitals in the state of Georgia. That's basically inclusive of your larger hospitals as well. So, uh, again, a very, uh, a good performance in regards to operating margin. The next page is return on equity. That is basically, uh, you know, the amount of net income earned per our net assets. And, uh, you will see the comparative there as well to the state average and the national average. Uh, paying special attention to the fact that on the national level, critical access hospitals have a negative, uh, return on equity, where we had a, uh, a, a good, sound positive number. A day's cash on hand, as a benefit of increased net incomes over the past few years and of the world hospital tax credit program. We have been able to acquire and maintain some cash balances, and as a result, uh, we have about one hundred and forty-one days cash on hand, uh, which provides some viability and some reserve, uh, for us to actually push back into operations and improve, uh, our facilities. A lot of that you see in some of the work that we've done around the hospital, uh, as far as facility improvement. Uh, the next page probably is the biggest area of concern, and that's age of plant. Uh, and you can see the comparatives of ten point five on the national average, twelve point six on the state average, and us being nearly at nineteen years as far as, uh, age of plant. Uh, one of the things that we have really worked hard on is, uh, trying to address our image and to do improvements around the hospital. You'll see that as well in the, uh, all the common areas, the corridors, the waiting rooms, the lobbies, et cetera, uh, major improvements. Our problems are that you walk into our patient rooms, and you're now back in the nineteen, early nineteen sixties. Uh, those are the areas that we really need to concentrate on and trying to address. Uh, that in itself is not an easy task, it's probably about a five million dollar overall spend in order to get that done. It's not something that we'll do, uh, all at once and overnight. It'll be definitely a, a several-year project trying to bring our facility back up to date as far as patient numbers. Um, then just to give you some understanding of, you know, where we are going forward, just kind of give you a look at where we have been as far as our two thousand and eighteen fiscal year. Two thousand and nineteen, we're really looking at a year of growth. You've also experienced and seen our new ten patient, ten beds inpatient psychiatric unit, which opened October first. Uh, we're very excited and proud of that. Right now, we have an average daily census of about three. Uh, however, that is voluntary, those are voluntary patients. We also have just filed our certificate to be a ten thirteen location, which would be unvoluntary, those individuals that are in crisis. And, uh, we would anticipate seeing census jumping up drastically when that's approved. We also opened up one care center in, uh, November of two thousand and eighteen, which includes two hypoglycemic chambers. Uh, we're excited about the benefit that that provides to the community and prevents people from having to travel for those services. Uh, and then some of the items where we are looking at spending, uh, dollars out of our capital budget, we have budgeted about four hundred thousand dollars for capital items. Number one item is our roof repair. Uh, you know, we have, uh, a lot of work on that building, but we still have some leak, a leaky roof. And that's one of the areas that we're wanting to concentrate on. We also have, uh, infrastructure items such as chillers and boilers we need to replace this year. Uh, we're replacing some patient beds and some ICU beds, uh, a new ventilator, just replaced the, the security camera system, uh, system, put forty-five cameras around the, uh, facility to assure security. Um, uh, doing some computer replacement and some clinical lighting in R D R. And then last but not least, just wanted to re-mention the scenario of the tax credit. Again, that's a great opportunity for the entire community to get involved and to, uh, support local healthcare. Uh, it's a very simple process, basically you donate to the hospital, and that donation then becomes a hundred percent tax credit on your Georgia tax return. Uh, you can donate up to five thousand dollars for a single individual, ten thousand for a couple, uh, and, um, it basically costs you no dollars for that donation. So you get recognized for the donation, but at the same point in time, you get your money back. Uh, and last but not least, you know where your dollars are going. We all get frustrated with paying our tax dollars, and they go into the, uh, black hole of, of Atlanta Legislature. Uh, with this, you actually know that it's going to be spent here locally, and it's going to be spent on local healthcare for you, your family, and your friends. Any questions?
I got a couple of things I want to mention. First of all, I took a little trip to the emergency room here a while back, and it had nothing to do with going to emergency room, but, but the folks were out for lunch, so I checked in through there. I remember when I was on that board, I would say nine out of ten complaints came out of the emergency room. And, you know, when I was there the other day, I couldn't have gotten mad at that girl. I mean, it didn't matter what my situation was, I don't believe I could have been disruptive or could have filed a complaint against, I mean, she was the sweetest thing, took the best care. Uh, I mean, everybody in there, they forgot they're throwing up, and he was smiling. And I mean, I just couldn't, she was standing bringing him bags, and you know, okay, you know, he was just doing anything in the world, she couldn't help him, and that was really impressive. And, and I'm sure it's changed a lot of folks' attitude about the hospital, just, uh, from the service they get out of the emergency room, because that was just always a sore thumb for everybody, so.
Yes, the one who works during lunch, she's been, every time I've got to have blood drawn, she's, she's there, right by her side, handling the whole crew, because, you know, they gotta take a look sometimes, so at least her on top spot.
I appreciate that comment. We always let, we always hear the negatives, it's great to hear the opposite.
Exactly.
Do you remember what our leadman I've seen is, I mean, it's way down, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the, um, in the past, that was probably the largest complaint, is the wait, uh, for individuals in ER. We have done a renovation of that ER area, and with that have provided, uh, opportunities to speed the process, process up. Uh, our left without being seen is down to one point five percent, national average is somewhere around five percent. So we've made a, a great stride in trying to address that issue, and hopefully, as people are going in, there, there are nobody seeing that change.
Much less intimidating when, when you walk in. Most emergency rooms are somewhat intimidating, you know, you walk in, you got glass walls everywhere, and, uh, but, but it's, it's really good, you can sit down and talk to somebody. Um, need to get a two-for-one on the boiler chiller when y'all do that, because we're, we're looking at it. We got some issues too, so before y'all do that, we need to see, we need to negotiate. Let's talk. That's certain. Yeah, and one other question, do you think, and I'm not trying to get in your business, but, but I've always thought this, uh, even going back ten years, uh, that hospital, would it not help us to give these donations if we formed the five oh one C three foundation versus, you know, just the tax credits? And, um, I mean, I don't want, you know, I just know some folks like to give to a five oh one C three, because it's, you know, you can get money from anywhere, all these kind of things, and we really don't have that avenue, and it's just kind of working out.
Right, well, we are a five oh one C three organization.
The hospital.
But they, that's our separate foundation. The hospital is five oh one C three, so if you donate to the hospital, you have the same benefit as donating to the foundation itself. But, uh, yes, actually, uh, I've got a file on my desk right now, looking at, uh, the opportunity of creating a foundation and, and the benefits that that would present to the hospital and to the community, actually. So, uh, we have, we have been looking at that. Any other questions? Before I go, I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Brad for his, uh, service on the board as well. Uh, he, he does not have a vote on our, our Board of Directors, but, uh, he has great words and, uh, and great knowledge, and we appreciate his service as well. So thank you so much, Eric.
Mr. Eugene Dyson, this is C O B I D, hence the name of the rec. Much as you have it, um, I admit, most of your time passed. I think, Mr. Eugene, now, I'm a coordinator for seven rooms, our C and D county. And, uh, somewhat over a year ago, we took the opportunity to write an application for the Recreation Department. Uh, I used one, was ten lights, two, and two, and add some of that to the feds, and let them approve it. Uh, the long, long, long process, but we were able to take it, did it a couple of weeks ago, advertised it before you all, uh, woke, and, uh, we received that two C O Bs. And I'm hoping to open them tonight, and probably say, you know, uh, it would have disappeared at the same time. But, uh, this will be it, is from, it actually came in at eight fifty-nine on the eighth, had to be in by twelve minutes.
And we're not sure we don't say anything about pricing upfront, because that's got us, you know, you get one bid, the other one's not applicable, or here we set prices, and it throws the whole system out.
Well, I, I would say, all of this has to be evaluated.
Right.
To see if it's what we asked for. So I need to share that information about cost with somebody.
Right.
I have the chair. To actually keep me out in, in the, um...
What you need to do, I just want to make sure we got two bids there that are both applicable.
Right, well, uh, and, and we'll have to evaluate this T and T fence, and, you know, I've got to make sure that none of y'all are relatives of T and T, or kin to them, or, or, um, five percent soggy, or three percent boggsy soggy. If you, if you do, then that gets out on that, but if you had any, ties to T and T, as a commission, as a blue person, you're, you're out, uh, that bid is out. So I have one from T and T, and then we have another one from Dixie Fence and Kell.
The pop's name here, Mr. Matt.
Dixie.
Dixie, yeah. You should be good with both of those, I know both of them quite well, so.
I think you're one.
They're both that.
You're a warm stock. Never notice anymore. There's a significant difference in the bids, I can say that. But without totally reviewing everything that got in there, you all got signed, you bid package, uh, you have to come out here and pick up the bid package, I have a bag of signed material I need for them. I will suggest that we, I make a copy and give it to Sheri, these two front pages, and then until I evaluate, because there is sort of a difference in the two bids.
Can I ask you something? And, uh, this is from my own personal perspective. Is there any way possible that, uh, I can assist you with evaluating whether they quoted apples for apples? I own fence business. I own a fence business.
Oh, you own fence business.
And matter of fact, the specs that you had, I drew look. So, I mean, I, I would love to sit down with you and look at them, because there's so many things where you can cut costs that nobody will ever know.
Right.
And I'm not saying that any of those bids, but them to be tremendously different, like you're saying, something's not right. Um, I mean, I'd just love to sit down and look at them with you as well before a decision is made, just to make sure. And, uh, one of those companies actually called, um, because of the specs, to ask what the specs actually were, and did that make sense, one thing or another, so, um, I don't know, there's not that much pressing.
If you're not satisfied with two bids, if you're not, then we should, I think we should just, uh, rebid it.
I'm not, I'm not disputing, I'll do whatever y'all say. I don't think we can rebid it without the pay, and I'd be happy to do that review. And I'd be happy to do that review and possibly share your take. We're looking at better than $40,000 difference in two bids. That's a lot.
So either way, you got to choose between those two bids, right? You want to pick between those two bids?
Well, if one, either one has exactly what you, if the lower bid don't have what you need, then.
Then how your bid gets.
That'll be your decision.
If he tells us the lower bid, if it's $40,000 lower, and y'all review it, that makes our standards and names.
Then you have the lower bid.
So that's what I would like to do, is tell me the lowest bid, if it's by $40,000, and then let y'all review it, if it makes our specs, we'll handle it.
That's right. I'd say no.
And if it don't, then we have not punished the.
Compromise the upper bid.
Right, right. That's why your buddy Stu got there.
Yeah, so it's going with the lowest bid, but it's got to meet our specs. And if you make a budget, go with a lower bid, I'll make specs. And we don't make that together and review.
But can you tell us that deal?
Well, if I do that, and you have to go back to the real bid. Because they just knew it's $40,000 less from the bid, so if we know which one's which, then they just know the exact.
Yeah, but I can't make a motion to go with that bid if I don't know. I'm not going to spend the money, and I don't know what I'm paying. I can't, I got a lot of money.
Do you want to say some session? I would suggest, I'd like to go back to your time, that what we do, evaluate some of the bids. I mean, I thought what I can do, if he tells us how much them bids are, we're going to have to go with one of them bids right there, whichever one. I mean, we ain't, it won't be fair to bid it back out and nothing else when we put them bids back.
Not if they don't meet our qualifications. If they meet our qualifications, then we should go with them.
What you want to do, you want to say, well, you may not meet our qualifications for $40,000, that's what we're doing.
I say we evaluate what you're.
If they don't meet qualifications, then they're automatically out anyway. What would be, what would be a reliable? If they do meet qualifications, and it's written with companies for it, well, those, we don't see anything.
I think we missed the boat here. We give these people opportunity to bid. And that's what we're here tonight, is open bids and award a bid to somebody if they meet our qualification.
Well, I'll make a motion that we don't get paid.
I mean, because we can just sit here and take bids from now till next year. But, I mean, I do agree to take the bid, give award a bid if they meet qual, if they don't meet qualifications, then I'm not going to give it to them.
They are in, they don't.
That's right. If you don't, if you can't do a job, then you don't get paid. And we got two bids, then we'll have to go with other, because that one doesn't meet qualifications. If the other one does meet.
Well, to open the road of admission, I could say. That's my, I maybe can't shoot you too.
And, and, and.
I really think what Brad's saying is what we normally do.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
I'm going to make a motion, we're going to accept this low bid right now, if they meet our qualification. If they don't, they out, we're going to go with other.
If he'll tell me. If he'll tell me the amount, I can't accept them right now.
Well, that's what I would suggest, that once we evaluate, we'll come back and make a announcement.
I just don't think that's right.
How can, how can we, you tell me, I'm suggesting how you want to do it. So the bid tells us a lot. So the bid tells us a lot.
Well, the lower the bid, let's get the job.
The lower the bid, get the job.
If we can't do the job, it ain't close like it should be. Just don't get paid. That's the bid.
My question is, in all these meetings, most of the time, we just get two bids, especially once the fence is there. You know, we get two, two bids. How come we're not getting more bids than that? Is that only two in this?
Because everybody did. I can't answer that.
I'm just asking that question.
Nobody said, except for, those come from locals, everybody's did.
TNT ain't local.
Well, listen, guys, what point is here, is we ask for sealed bids. We got sealed bids, now they have been unsealed. We have got to know them, in my opinion. And as advertised on the state websites, we have got to be presenting the amounts of these bids, and then decide which one we will take, as long as they meet our.
I'm making a motion, I'm waiting on a second.
I see.
Any discussion? All vote.
Now, with your.
Your bid. Your bid. Dixie Fence and Kennel, $162,000, $403. $403, $162, $403.
I will make a motion that, that we go with TNT Fencing on the bid, if they met our bid specifications. After Hank and Keith or Sherry and Mr. Tyler, if they don't, we'll have it back in the book. That's it.
All vote. I will just keep, tomorrow, we'll shut the time up, and we come over and. Thank you all. Can I make one more, Mr. Chairman, one more quick comment on this, Dixie Fence? If you live in Jeff Davis County, and your watershed is Dixie Tele Creek, or if any of your area flows into Dixie Tele Creek. We have some funds available to do cross fencing, exclusion fencing, which means keeping the cows or goats or whatever out of the stream. And that's a 60-40.
They don't have Rutherford Buller.
Sir?
Rutherford Buller, though.
I was hoping you were going to tell me you had some funds to build a big guy, because Dixie Tele Creek has been flowing through my backyard for about half this year.
We have that, and what you do, set the placement, repair all flood valves at a 40%, so. Any constituents in that area, I got, I can do one stat now, probably, in the area of. Send them my way, that part, I'll be going with them.
Thanks, sir. I got one question. Can y'all read? And to check you and everybody, I think if you took that.
I know that.
And do a couple more.
You know that? Approved to purchase a used John Deere five game reel more for the Rec Park.
Yes, um, we got a free reel more right now, that's valued at about $2,500. I mean, it's, that's the trading value of what we got. Automakers have been down on it, you know, they can't stay up and stuff. But the new addition to the facilities, our 341, our new soccer, the motorbike, football fields, and other fields. Five game, you know, for the hours and stuff, I mean, that free reel, it can't stay up on the complex out there. Because if you're going to run probably $20 to $25 a week, that's constantly cutting grass and specs and all, three quarters, that's the moment high. But, um.
They're only flying through a hundred, I mean.
A new mower is anywhere from $53,000 to $56,000. That's brand new, that's, that's, that's new off showroom. And I said, I wanted exactly what the picture, I think you guys got that picture right there, that used mower right there, it's been reconditioned. You got new cans, you got new reels, new bad knives. It's been reconditioned, everything, the filters, hydraulics, everything's been serviced on it, everything, it needs specs. It's a very clean mower, I got it under myself on this one. And it's got 1,586 hours on it. And it's, um, for $18,000.
Is that an individual? Can he do a watch?
No, that's, that's, that's a, he's, he's a bidder that goes to auctions and stuff, he buys them at auctions.
Or refurbished.
That's John Deere, it's refurbished more.
So it is an individual, we wouldn't be buying it from a company.
Yes, it is an individual, yes.
What kind of warranty?
Yes, there's no warranties as is, versus a two-year warranty with John Deere. But the huge, huge units of John Deere. Is $24,000, and we know the same idea, we know no warranty.
And we would pay for it as well.
They have funds, their board has already told you that, so they're just asking for our.
I make a motion, the two of us present. I mean, the unit is in good condition, guys, I mean, I've, I've got a lot of background, oil technician and stuff, all that maintenance and stuff, I mean, it's just. I mean, I know anything could happen, you could have a bad unit, it'd be a little too, but I, you know, this guy right here, he does some workforce too far there, because he does the golf course stuff. And all that stuff out there, it's in the past.
You making a motion?
I agree.
And I'll say, I don't want to talk first, but talk about this one.
Any discussion? All vote.
Thank you, guys. Hopefully more about that too, but I need to move them on. Grass and everything.
The funds are already high.
Yeah, they are, they're all.
Approved to hire the road park. Let's go. Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, so, all, any discussion? Approved, my code of conduct, particular request on, we'll have to call another night, 40 papers again, all of them.
Let me give you a quick rundown. This is not to intimidate folks from all these reasons. Y'all know how many times, this, really happens since you've been on board, but how many times folks have got up there, spoke behind that podium, left out of that door, and I'm running them down outside, finding out who they were? Because they never announced who they were, and we never had a clue, you know, what they are. And to the contrary, or in addition to that, how many times we've had individuals stand up in this meeting and attack individuals on this board? And that's not what they're here for. They're here to address the chairman, and it's here for public comment, it's not here for discussion, rebuttal, or nothing else. Because 99% of the time, we don't even know what they're here to talk about, so we therefore don't have the answers. And it's very simple. When they get here, they put their name and address and where they're from. And also, to unintimidate some folks, it gives them an opportunity to check whether they're speaking for themselves, or whether they have a proxy, or somebody else that's going to speak on their behalf. So folks that might be scared to get up and talk about it, it gives them the opportunity to do that as well. Really more of a code of conduct than anything. You complete the little name, address, whether you're speaking for yourself or not, that's all you do. Begin your comments by stating your name. Direct your comments to the chair versus individuals. And it even says that, please refrain from addressing any individual member, board, staff member, or otherwise people in the audience. Keep your comments pertinent to the subject. Refrain from making personal remarks, not remarks, challenge the integrity and competency of anybody on board. Keep your comments to five minutes, don't overlanguage, turn your phone off, that kind of stuff. It's just a standard business code methods. I mean, if we can't hold ourselves to that standard, or the people that come in here to address us, then so be it. You know, it is not in any way to intimidate anybody from wanting to come speak in a public comment session. So with that, I'd ask that we could approve this, and again, you, sir, that connects me.
Well, I say everybody can't read, everybody can't write. I think we all wrong. And we, I think we know how to hold. Be nice to everybody, how about that? And ain't nothing wrong with that, because I'm just, it's just paperwork.
Well, I think it would keep late more. Last time, last time I think they had a really chaos going on about fighting, I'm just going to say it, when Gary was the administrator, the, what is his name? What? I've been around the.
Joe Ture.
Hot Joe Ture. Berdus Taylor, Berdus. I doubt about all the things that really got, ever since then, we really haven't had those problems. I, I think so. Not that I really call an issue that we can't.
I don't know, I personally seen many folks call our road superintendent out, drag him up here, red load the coves personally, for one thing or another, because their pot bowl wasn't fixed, et cetera, et cetera. That ain't what public comments are all about. Public comments about bringing their concern to the board, giving us a month, a week, or whatever, to address their comment. That's the individual work of the board, it's not about a finger pointing session and, uh, folks bearing their, you know, their, their strongness, or whatever, the certain employees of the county. And I mean, I'll tell you, I have.
Well, you know what I'm saying, either way, if they get out of hand, they gonna be escorted away with Dr. Spay. Yeah, you want to be escorted without.
I've never seen anybody get told to sit down and shut up, they were out of order.
Well, that's the chair.
And there's been a million people that have been out of order in these.
That, that, that's the chair, though.
But we got two chairs.
All, all that, I read over, and I like what you got there. And, uh, one of the things that we, I think, and I don't know how to add to it. But when somebody has, when somebody addresses us with questions, I think we need to ask for that question.
Or do you ask?
Not from here, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But we need to ask for it, and I don't know if we're answering those questions. I, I don't think we're answering them. And, and I think that really, me talking, is when we get addressed for these questions.
Well, that'll give you a record, probably.
That, that'll give you a record, that's right. And we, and we, that's right, and we'll look at it. And then, I suppose Keith or Sherry, they can leave their number, that we can get back with them. And that's why I'm talking about this, this paper. If we're going to add it, I think we need to do that, and have, we can get back with them, in a timely manner. I'm talking about a week.
Well, that's most expensive, when they come to board.
If we're going to do this paperwork, then we need to be responsible enough to get back with them.
I, I agree with you.
And, and I follow this paperwork, that's what we're going to do.
But you could, okay, just say, okay, what you're saying is, make this miss out before, during the week of, before you get out.
No, they gonna have it.
You fill it out.
They fill it out. But, but it's going to make us responsible to get back to these people and let them know. Example, Joe Turner told. I hadn't, I mean, I've heard a bunch of times, and I hadn't heard nobody respond back to that. I mean, I hadn't heard a response. And, and y'all brought his name up, I guess, it run, run him out. So anyway, that's, that's what I brought, that, that, when we do paperwork, we're going to do it, we're going to get back with them. In a timely manner, and I would put like a week on it.
And I think, yeah, there need to be more officials than what we can be, but some, some luck's kind, if you don't have paperwork, then you might, you might forget.
Well, I can tell you, the young lady that spoke at several of these meetings, I mean, I've attempted to get back with her, and I ain't got a fool who highly even find her. And that's exactly what, but with nothing that this should drive us to be able to be more responsive.
That's right. And, and that's, that's why I'm for, I'm for.
You making a motion?
You making a motion, and we, we're going to.
You make a motion.
I'm ready.
Any discussion? Any new or old bid? We want a low session. We can adjourn.
Get out here, we need to meet.
Turner, huh?
Yeah.
I apologize, been a little bit late, my son wrecked over the dirt.